We are calling the November fifteenth Board of Education Special Meeting to order. First, we need to acknowledge AB 361, which states that we are, so every thirty days, we reassess the safety protocols and we're going to continue in this hybrid fashion. All right. Next up is the public hearing for the sufficiency of textbooks and instructional material. This is you, Tony.
Yeah, so this is just a requirement. Every year, we do sufficiency of textbook materials. And so we would just open it up for public hearing.
I believe we're going to have comments on this later in the agenda, right? All right. So now we're going to open up the public hearing for Magnolia Global Academy.
Did you open up the public hearing? You had to open a public hearing before three point one and then close it.
Okay. So we're going to open up.
If anyone wants to make any comment.
I'm going to throw it to Superintendent Harris for this item.
So three point one, public hearing, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, sufficiency of textbooks and instructional materials per ED code six zero one one nine. It's something that we are required to do each year. So we're going to, why don't we open the, open the public comment for, for public comments? Hit the gavel. President Bond.
We are opening the public comment for sufficiency of textbooks and instructional material. If anyone wants to comment about this, please submit a yellow card or put your first and last name in the chat. While we are waiting to see if anyone wants to comment just on this item, I'm going to read our public comment policy. All right. Under Government Code Section five four nine five four point three A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest providing relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items, period. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four-minute-per-person limit or a twenty-minute limit per subject matter. All right. Do we have any one who wants to speak about instructional materials? No?
It looks like we can close the, close the chat and close the hearing.
We are closing the hearing on item three point one. All right. Now we are, we are going to open the public hearing for item three point two, Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders. All right. I'm opening the public hearing regarding the Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders Charter Petition. The board has received the district staff report in regards to the petition and a written response from the report, sorry, to the report from the petitioners. It is my understanding that Superintendent Harris will now introduce this item and the staff's recommendation regarding the charter petition. Per the Education Code, the petitioners will then be afforded equivalent time, which is up to five minutes, to present evidence and testimony to respond to the staff's recommendation and findings. All right. So Matthew, go ahead.
So the, I just want to give a little background here. The petition for the, for the establishment of the Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders Charter School was submitted to the district on August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. As required by the Education Code, a public hearing regarding the petition was held on October twelfth, so the board could hear and consider the level of support for the charter petition by teachers, other employees of the district, parents, guardians, and students. Pursuant to ED Code Section four seven six oh five, the board shall either grant or deny the petition within ninety days from receipt of the petition. The petitioners were informed that board action regarding the petition would be agendized for action at this November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one special board meeting, and were provided a copy of the staff report, which was also posted on the district's website starting October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one. A team comprised of district staff members and legal counsel conducted a comprehensive review of the charter petition and accompanying documents and provided input relevant to their areas of expertise in preparing, in preparation of the findings and recommendations including, included in the staff report. While we appreciate and respect the petitioners' enthusiasm, their shared commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusivity, their interest in submitting the petition to the district with the commendable goal of improving educational opportunity within our district, for the reasons outlined in the staff report, it's been determined that more than one of the legal grounds for denial under Educational Code Section four seven six oh five exists, and the staff recommendation is denial of the petition. Accordingly, staff recommends that the board take action to deny the petition for the establishment of the Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders Charter School and adopt the findings in support of denial under Section five of the staff report as the board's written findings in support of the denial. So this time, Magnolia Charter School has five minutes to respond if they'd like to. We have seen the, their written response. I'm going to open it up to them for five minutes, and then we can continue with the public hearing.
Are they on Zoom or in person? Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Hi, everyone.
That's, I don't need to be.
Thank you. So thank you, everyone, for having us tonight. So on behalf of the entire Magnolia Global Academy team, we would like to thank the PCS staff and Board of Education for thoroughly reviewing our charter petition. We are all aware that the law can be interpreted in a myriad of different ways. While the MGAL team and our legal counsel have a different interpretation of charter law, we feel that it is more important to work in partnership to accomplish our shared goal of creating innovative, equitable educational programs for students in Petaluma and Sonoma County more broadly. There is no high school like MGAL in our community. Trust me, I graduated from one. MGAL's blend of unique offerings, a small school setting, project-based learning pedagogy, opportunities for international and domestic travel, and a deep focus on equity are different from all the other high schools, private or public, in our Sonoma County community. Our school is so popular precisely because it is so different from all other local offerings. It is inarguable that there is a need for MGAL in our community. You have heard from your constituents about the support for our school, and you will hear for some more tonight. The Petaluma and Sonoma County communities have spoken. The need is real, and the time to act kind of is now. So we ask that the Board of Education, knowing that there is vast public support for our school and an unmet need in our community, work to be solutions-oriented in finding a way to bring MGAL to Petaluma. The MGAL team feels that there are three options moving forward. One, we are able to make substantial edits to our charter petition to satisfy the needs of the district and move forward in petitioning again. Two, we are able to build out an alternative model for MGAL through working with the PCS Board of Education and staff to identify a structure that will allow MGAL to remain true to its mission, vision, values, pedagogy, and design. Or three, we work with one of the other interested school districts in Sonoma County to make MGAL a reality, because this school is getting built, and you have the choice to build it here, or it will get built somewhere else. We now look to you, PCS Board of Education, to work with the MGAL team to identify potential solutions to bring this much-needed school to our community, and to listen to your constituents who have asked you time and again to do this. Take it from me, I was educated here in public schools in Petaluma and Sonoma County, and I've lived here for a long time. This school would have changed the trajectory of my life. Tonight, you have the opportunity to change the trajectory of other students' life by building a school like this in Sonoma County. Thank you.
Okay. So, all right. Ashley, how many do, how many written comments do we have? Okay. Then we have one, two. Does everyone who wants to speak, have you submitted one of the yellow cards? Okay. You can go ahead now if you want to. So typically, we only give twenty minutes per subject, but I want everyone to at least be heard. So we're going to do a minute per person on this. Ready to read them again? I'm sorry. Okay. All right. That's fine. I like that plan. Also, do we have anyone on the chat? Who, if, okay, we'll give a chance. If anyone who is zooming in would like to comment, please put your first and last name in the chat and the item that you would like to speak towards. If it's this, just put MGAL, and we'll give a couple minutes. All right. We'll continue, we'll continue to monitor the chat, and we will start with public comments from people that are in-house. First up is Tegan Hoover.
Everybody, thank you so much. My name is Tegan Hoover. That's my fifth-grade daughter there. I want my daughter to live in and my community to be a world that not only professes to value inclusivity and equity, but that lives it. Paraphrasing Gandhi, I want our community to be the change we want to see in the world. I want my daughter to grow up in a world where she sees strong leaders who are women, queer, BIPOC. I want her to emulate strong leaders, like the women leading the charge for MGAL. These are women who are passionate about giving our community and our kids an educational model that is sorely needed. Let's do this for our community. Let's get over the fact that it's a group of young women leading this charge. Let's empower them to do what they know they can do, provide an educational model that embraces equity and diversity while modeling strong leadership and global citizenship. If the petition isn't perfect, please work with the MGAL leaders to make it so.
Your time is up, Tegan. Sorry, I keep saying your name wrong. Can you pronounce it?
Tegan.
Tegan. Thank you. All right. Next up is Yancy.
Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders is an exciting space because we're tapping into the knowledge our young people, family, and educators bring to the table. We know students care about educational opportunities that allow them to deepen their knowledge about who they are and explore what their place in our community and broader world may be. We've seen nationwide movements such as Diversify Our Narrative led by young people in an effort to ensure our curriculum is inclusive of all of our identities. Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders is an act of self-love and proclamation of the care we have for each other. In order for us to bring our best selves forward, we need to know that we are safe in bringing all of ourselves forward. It is clear that all students have so much to offer. It's only fair to them and to our institutions and communities that we recognize the strengths they bring, our welcoming of the diversity they have to share, and value the insights they have cultivated. The Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders is a place for all, so that we may be, so that we may all be more together. Muchas gracias a todas las familias que se han unido a este movimiento y quieren ver ese sueño que compartimos hecho realidad. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Next up, Jeanne.
I'm smiling under here, you guys. I want to start by saying thank you. I can only imagine the last two years and what that's been like for you. So I recognize that introducing a new and different school program into the district requires additional work and logistical considerations, but I am hopeful that the members of the board will recognize Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders as an amazing opportunity. It's an opportunity for the Petaluma City School District. It's a chance to be a transformational leader in the county's educational offerings by creating the first space for our historically marginalized students, not only to succeed academically, but to thrive as individuals, and ultimately become the progressive leaders and contributors that will make Sonoma County and the world a better place for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, Paloma Napkar.
Hello. Thank you all for having us tonight. We need this school. My daughter needs this school. We cannot attend a conventional public high school. My daughter suffered academically and mentally when she began middle school at Altamira Public School in Sonoma. It was a cold institution with a floundering faculty who could not support my child, and I believe that the dilemma I encountered there is a nationwide educational epidemic. It's not enough out there right now that's being offered to our kids educationally. And at MGAL, we have a vision to give our children a better shot at learning and living. We can build a better place for our kids to be educated, respected, recognized for their worth, and that place can be MGAL. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I cannot read this handwriting. Is it David or Diana? Starts with a D. Last name starts with an R.
I'm really bad at writing.
What's your name?
My name is Diana Ruiz. Hello, board, respected board members, esteemed board members. My name is Diana Ruiz, and I'm here to ask you to vote for this school. When we think of society today, it's innovative. It's innovating at the speed of light. The people that are in charge of this innovation, that are bringing it forth, are those that are in their twenties and their early thirties. They are the ones that are actually transforming the way that we're going to interact and be in this world. They are calling for accountability and transparency, and that's behind equity and justice. So the children that are coming after them, that's what they hold, that's what they want, and that's what they're calling for. Us as influential leaders, in leaving our legacy and doing something for the future, our obligation is to open the door. Our obligation is to support the next generation.
Diana, I'm sorry. It's been a minute.
So I ask you to help bring this school forth, to help bring innovation forth.
Thank you, Diana.
Thank you. One minute's enough.
Okay. Next up is Chad.
Hi. Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity. Thanks for all you do. I'm the father of two girls who go to Cherry Valley School, kindergarten and third grade. Feel privileged to have them in that school, but I do worry about the school choice options that exist in Petaluma, specifically grades seven through twelve. There are not a lot of options. I'm lucky to be in Cherry Valley and go through grade eight. There's Live Oak School. Outside of that, where are kids going for an alternative choice? I believe in school choice. I believe in the power of charter schools. I believe Petaluma should lead in this effort and offer options at the seven to twelve level. MGAL is a perfect opportunity to lead, and the issues that maybe are there can be worked out, but don't miss out on the opportunity of the school, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So that is it for the in-person comments. How many do we have in the chat? Okay. All right. So who's first up? I can't see that far. Can you see Matthew?
Go ahead.
Is it Z H?
Yeah, Zyra.
It's Zyra.
Look like houseplants. Ooh, that was fun.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Let me know when I'm able to proceed, so I can start my minute.
We can hear you.
Go ahead.
Okay. So hello again. My name's Zyra Garcia. Pronouns, are they them? I am not speaking in behalf of any group. I come here as an individual, so I am speaking on behalf of myself. I first off want to say that I applaud Magnolia for what they want to do, and I continue to keep hearing the word equity, but my concern and my questions are about the written language piece. So the policy is really what I'm critiquing right now. My main concern is the admission preference in the case of the public random drawing shall be given to students in the following sequence of priority. Children of Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders, faculty, staff, founding members, and founding advisory body, and community advisory council members not to exceed ten percent of the total school enrollment, followed by the children who qualify for free or reduced-price meals, followed by siblings of students admitted to or attending the charter school, followed by residents of the district, followed by all other applicants. That, to me, doesn't necessarily state, or feel, or seem, or reflect equity, nor is it in favor of the Petaluma City School students.
Zyra, you only have about ten seconds left.
Another thing is the impacts, like, for example, Roslin, how is that not going to impact, because they already have a low enrollment count? So that's impacting another school district. Again, if we're going to talk about equitable, let's really look at the impacts around this. Thanks.
Thank you. I just want to remind everyone, I don't know if you guys heard initially, we can only give one minute per person.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, thanks. Salandopolis, they then pronouns, speaking on behalf of North Bay LGBTQI families, just wanted to briefly reiterate the written input we've sent to PCS, which is that we are opposed to the Magnolia Charter Petition, while we are, you know, of course, supportive of equity and inclusion work in PCS, and agree that there's a need for change in this regard around secondary education in Petaluma. After meeting with Magnolia this summer and hearing the presentation of the school board meeting last month, we, you know, declined to support the petition for a number of reasons. Broadly speaking, a lot of it, you know, centers around what we feel is a lack of specifics as to how this large and complex and somewhat evolving vision would actually be implemented, which we thought was a pretty significant issue, given the stated purpose of the school around serving marginalized students, including LGBTQIA+ and BIPOC students. And there also seemed to be an overreliance on community input around foundational things that we felt that the folks, you know, heading up the school should kind of be better versed on, particularly having this focus, and we ultimately just haven't felt confident that the support that they say have stated that they want to offer LGBTQIA+ and BIPOC students will actually materialize, and similar to what Zyra just mentioned around concerns.
Thank you, Sal.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to assure you, we received your email as well.
All right. Thank you. I think it's difficult to deny that this country's history is steeped in white patriarchy and the structures that it has created to self-repetuate and accumulate and concentrate power largely in the hands of white males. And I'm sorry to say this, I appreciate all the work you guys do, but the education system overall is no exception, and the core mission of MGAL offers a much-needed antidote to that. So instead of propagating more of the same old, same old, Petaluma could help to usher in a desperately needed shift in perspective. It could be a trendsetter, and there's a lot of public comment clearly supporting this. You know, I worked hard to elect some of you, and I did that expressly to empower you to help transform public education in Petaluma in just this way. I read the staff report in support of denial, and I believe that instead of dissecting the petition in order to craft the denial recommendation, the staff should be serving the will of the community by stridently supporting the petitioners in recrafting the petition to make it viable and address some of the very real concerns.
Thank you, Patrick. Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have Jenny Griffo.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead.
That was perfect timing, because I just pulled into my driveway, and I was like, please don't call me when I'm driving. Thank you all for doing this. Thank you, MGAL, for submitting this charter and working so hard. Thank you to everyone who has taken the time to read it, to critique it, to think about it, to discuss it. Clearly, a lot to be discussed and talked about and ironed out. We need something like this in our community in Sonoma County, in Petaluma. I think that I echo some of the things that a lot of people are saying, is that this charter, while it may have lots of questions, lots of thoughts, lots of things that need to be ironed out and figured out, whether it be location or, you know, what have you, you all, as the board and the staff at Petaluma City Schools, you all are the experts here. You are the professionals. You're the ones that know how to do it. There is clearly a need for this work to be done here. We see that over and time and time again in Petaluma, in Sonoma County. So how do we incorporate these ideals? We have an opportunity here to take this idea and these, this work that's been done and move it forward, whether it be incorporated into one of our schools that needs some support. Thank you all for what you're doing.
Thank you, Sarah. Next up is Julie Peterson.
Okay. Can you all hear me?
Go ahead, Julie.
Great. Hi, everyone. My name is Julie Peterson. I have two children in Petaluma City Schools, one at McKinley and one at Petaluma Accelerated Charter School, and I'm here to join the chorus of folks asking the board and the staff to attempt to collaborate with the founding team and board of Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders. I would love to see this program open in Petaluma rather than elsewhere in Sonoma County. Our children and many of our friends have benefited over the years to the many options at the elementary level that narrow at the middle school level and are now starting to come up on the high school level, and noticing that at the very moment that's most critical to lifelong success for our students, that's exactly when our school options narrow rather than widen, and we see so many of our friends getting on buses and trains and in their cars day after day to drive their kids to Cotati, Roner Park, Nevado, and Santa Rosa to find options beyond our two comprehensive high schools. So I would love to see this board embrace this opportunity to collaborate with Magnolia to create another option for high school here in Petaluma. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Next up is Sarah Brooks Long.
Hello. As charters are an opt-in process, they are continually taking students with strong, supportive families away from your average public school. This threatens to cause the opposite of creating an equitable and diverse school. Charter schools such as Unintended consequences are still consequences. What is the true likely impact of this school for the real students in need? Who will the school draw from to increase diversity? Because it can't happen from just looking in Petaluma. LC Allen is just such a school. They suffered tremendously when a local charter came in drawing their higher-performing students. This has had a really dramatic impact on those students left behind. Until we can understand better what this impact will be on surrounding schools and especially low-resourced BIPOC LGBTQ+ students who are left behind, I think we need to slow down and proceed carefully. We need to listen better to the very students and communities the school is attending.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Next up is Sarah Seichek.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead.
That was perfect timing because I just pulled into my driveway and I was like, please don't call me when I'm driving. Thank you all for doing this. Thank you, MGAL, for submitting this charter and working so hard. Thank you to everyone who has taken the time to read it, to critique it, to think about it, to discuss it. Clearly a lot to be discussed and talked about and ironed out. Need something like this in our community in Sonoma County, in Petaluma. I think that I echo some of the things that a lot of people are saying is that this charter, while it may have lots of questions, lots of thoughts, lots of things that need to be ironed out and figured out, whether it be location or, you know, what have you. You all, as the board and the staff at Petaluma City Schools, you all are the experts here. You are the professionals. You're the ones that know how to do it. There is clearly a need for this work to be done here. We see that over and time and time again in Petaluma, in Sonoma County. So how do we incorporate these ideals? We have an opportunity here to take this idea and this work that's been done and move it forward, whether it be incorporated into one of our schools that needs some support. Thank you all for what you're doing.
Thank you, Sarah. Next up is Julie Peterson.
Okay, can you all hear me?
Go ahead, Julie.
Great. Hi, everyone. My name is Julie Peterson. I have two children in Petaluma City Schools, one at McKinley and one at Petaluma Accelerated Charter School. And I'm here to join the chorus of folks asking the board and the staff to attempt to collaborate with the founding team and board of Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders. I would love to see this program open in Petaluma rather than elsewhere in Sonoma County. Our children and many of our friends have benefited over the years to the many options at the elementary level that narrow at the middle school level and are now starting to come up on the high school level and noticing that at the very moment that's most critical to lifelong success for our students, that's exactly when our school options narrow rather than widen. And we see so many of our friends getting on buses and trains and in their cars day after day to drive their kids to Cotati, Roner Park, Nevado, and Santa Rosa to find options beyond our two comprehensive high schools. So I would love to see this board embrace this opportunity to collaborate with Magnolia to create another option for high school here in Petaluma. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Next up is Sarah Brooks Long.
Hello. As charters are an opt-in process, they are continually taking students with strong supportive families away from your average public school. This threatens to cause the opposite of creating an equitable and diverse school. Charter schools such as Credo or Technology High School, if you look at their racial diversity, are predominantly white and high socioeconomic. Charter schools attract those families away from public schools, creating public schools with low socioeconomic populations that in and of themselves tend to be more diverse. So I hope that we want to keep Petaluma City Schools as diverse and equitable as possible by not supporting Magnolia Charter.
Thank you, Sarah. Next up is Carrie Eisen.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Go ahead, Carrie. No, we just lost you, Carrie.
Carrie, we're going to go to the next speaker and we'll bring you back up when you can come back.
Next up is Karen McGahey.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead, Karen.
Yeah. I just wanted to say, you know, I've heard so many people talk about the pedagogy and all the things that it's offering about this. But what I want to talk about is what it offers Petaluma City Schools as an organization. Having been principal of Mary Collins School for seven, six years, was principal grant for seven, I know and understand the benefit of having a charter school in the district provides. Mary Collins School brought students from all over the county. And these students then left and went to other high schools. They went to Credo, they went to Art Quest, they went to Roy School of the Arts. And I think that having, and, you know, when I went to Mary Collins School, I wasn't that big an advocate of charter schools. But after I was there for a while, I thought, man, this is really bringing students into the district. It's a real addition to the district. So I'm advocating that a charter high school would not only, not only keep your students in the district, Mary Collins School students would stay there. They would stay in your district, but they would.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen. Up next is Kane Lisker.
Hello, can you hear me?
Go ahead, Kane.
Okay, great. Thank you. My name's Kane Lisker, and I am a public middle school teacher. I teach US history and government. I've been a teacher for 21 years. And I'm here to speak in support of Magnolia, at Magnolia Charter School. We are living through critical times and the world is transitioning into new understandings, heightened consciousness and greater awareness. There's new and unprecedented focus on anti-racism, gender identity, environmental sustainability, global interconnectedness, and a myriad of other issues that so many of us are eager to learn more about and incorporate into a new way of living. The younger generations desperately need schools and teachers that can educate, guide, and help them understand and process this changing world. And Magnolia is establishing itself as a model for this type of learning environment. And how lucky and honored we are that Magnolia has chosen Petaluma as its location to establish itself. How lucky these children who enroll in this program will be when they begin to experience the pride that comes with the core values of leadership and personal excellence. As a father of a young woman who is searching for this type of environment and learning opportunity, I'm thrilled with the possibility of enrolling her in this school.
Thank you, Kane. Sorry.
Thank you very much. Please support.
We received your email as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Kane. So we're going to try again. We're going to bring Carrie Eisen back up.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yep, go ahead, Carrie.
Okay, so sorry about that. Okay, the American education system has remained largely unchanged for the last 100-plus years. For the entirety of its existence, it has and continues to uphold racial, gender, and class-based hierarchies, among many other vectors of power. Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders is a chance to change that. By putting race, gender, and class at the forefront of its curriculum, Magnolia not only creates students who develop the core skills we expect in public education, but the community members who better understand the social systems and structures that surround us. This serves to amplify voices of the global majority who are not well-represented in public education. Sonoma County and Petaluma City Schools District in particular has the opportunity to be at the forefront of education reform. Rather than simply churning out a labor force, Magnolia promises to create thoughtful and critical speakers who have the skills and tools necessary to affect social change. As a low-income Korean community member, I am prepared to fiercely fight for this school because it is important that everybody in our community is well-represented within our public education system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. That's the last Zoom speaker.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ashley, you ready? So just for the benefit of everyone here and online, Ashley is reading public comments that were sent in prior to the meeting today.
So I'm just going to read through them. Okay. First one we have is from Vicky Duffden. My name is Vicky Duffden. I live in Petaluma and currently have two step-grandchildren, for whom I have authority, who attend Petaluma Junior High School. I am unable to attend the school board meeting on Tuesday, or I guess Monday, and would like this read aloud as public comment. Please vote to authorize MGAL as a dependent charter school in Petaluma City School District. I support this team and I want the Petaluma City School Board to work with the MGAL team to make this a reality. I want MGAL in our community because they are committed to celebrating the differences in people, empowering the students, focusing their self-worth, and building relationships with each other. I am very excited at the possibility of MGAL being an educational choice for us. Please vote to authorize MGAL. Thank you for considering this message and thank you for all the work for our schools. Okay. My name is Mike Guernon, and I have two children who graduated from Casa Grande High School. First off, I'd really like to thank you for all your hard work. Public education seems to be constantly challenged. However, I want to reflect back to you that our belief in that system helped my wife and I graduate two successful students who have gone on to establish themselves in their respective careers and communities. I respect that there are a lot of battles you face individually and as a group. I have lived in Petaluma for 21 years. I was very involved in bringing the CIF Lacrosse Program to Petaluma and Casa Grande High Schools. Prior to that, I spent years on committees at both Otisara and Meadow School. Being up close to some of the challenges, I have the greatest respect and appreciation for what you do. I am writing to you today in support of MGAL initiative and more specifically, the leadership of Gianna Biaggi. I have known Gianna Biaggi since she was a high school student in Petaluma. As someone who grew up in Petaluma and Sonoma County and attended public schools here, Gianna has a unique understanding of some of the challenges that girls specifically and students more broadly face in our public schools. Gianna has spent the past year and a half working to bring MGAL to Petaluma.
Thank you, Ashley.
Next one is, my name is Joyce Galindo. I am an alumna of Casa Grande High School, class of 2007. I also have two sisters who are in Petaluma City Schools, one at Casa Grande High School and one at Kenneworth Junior High. I have many years of experience working in secondary schools as part of the migrant program and currently facilitate groups and presentations to K-12 grade levels on consent, sexual assault, and healthy relationships. I have had the opportunity to interact with many school board members during my time at Casa Grande. Ms. Cloud, you were a teacher at Casa when I was a student there, as well as when I worked as a migrant educator advisor from 2009 to 2013. I appreciate all your work ensuring that we have a high-quality schools in our community. As an alumna of Casa Grande, I have a unique understanding of some of the challenges that our students face in the classroom. I support MGAL because when I was staffed at different schools, many students disclosed they went to school but didn't feel sense of inclusion nor that they were part of a community which MGAL offers and much more. I know how much our students will benefit from a school like MGAL. I support this team and this school. Please.
Thank you, Ashley.
Okay. Rob Riordan writes, I write in support of Gianna Biaggi, her team, and the proposed MGAL. I have worked with Gianna at High Tech High Graduate School of Education, GSE, where as a part of a comprehensive program in school leadership, she took my course in facilitating adult learning. Based on many conversations with Gianna in that course and on her exemplary work in the program overall, I am confident that her vision, leadership skills, and experience equip her to implement and refine Magnolia MGAL's innovative design. As a native of Petaluma/Sonoma County who attended public schools in the area, Gianna combines a deep lived experience in the local community with a nuanced understanding of the innovative programming and pedagogies. MGAL's design with its focus on equity, experiential learning, community partnership, and global citizenship is consistent with the structure and values of High Tech High. A proven innovation with a 20-year history of equity and excellence, schools like MGAL, student-centered, equity-focused, and progress-based play a vital role in the educational ecosystem in local communities.
Thank you, Ashley.
Okay. My name is Shannon Paras. I have two children who attend Cherry Valley School. Please vote to authorize Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders as a dependent charter school in the Petaluma City Schools District. I want this school in Petaluma because as a mother of two daughters, the path this charter is taking represents the vision and values I strive to instill in my girls. The school would be a beautiful complement to the many diverse options of education available in Petaluma. With such deep inequalities of gender in the workplace, what better option than to spend their most formative years growing up a priceless self-confidence and world-navigating skills to help work towards closing the gaps for their future? It would be such a gift to the girls of Petaluma, present and future. It would put the city on the map as a place that supports progressive educational options. Highly coveted after the hit formal education has taken with the impact of the last few years, please vote to authorize MGAL and work with MGAL team to bring this school to our community. Thank you. I'm grateful for all the hard work you are doing at this time. Okay. My name is Alicia Montefour, and I am a 10th grade student at Casa Grande High School. I previously attended Loma Vista and Kenneworth Junior High School. I am unable to attend the meeting on the 15th and would like this read aloud as public comment. I ask today that you vote to authorize Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders. I support this school because my research has proved to me that it shows inclusivity and has everyone's best interest in mind. It will also allow many youths to think outside the box and focus on their future goals through internships. I ask the school board to vote to support Magnolia Global Academy. Okay. My name is Jessica Dimitrio, and I have one children who attends Nevado Charter School. Please vote to authorize Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders as a dependent charter school in the Petaluma City Schools District. I want this school in Petaluma because I think it's important that children have different options when it comes to learning and not all students come from the same background and thrive in the same environments. I also work for Mentor Me and see how many amazing students are drowning in a school system that doesn't see their special gifts. Please let this school open so we can give our children another opportunity to expand a different set of skills to aid them towards the path of higher education where their leadership abilities will be even further utilized. Please vote to authorize MGAL and work with the MGAL team to bring this school to our community. Okay. My name is Jennifer Gray Thompson, and I am on the MGAL Advisory Body. I chose to support this effort led by Gianna Biaggi and the vision of the design team because we have opportunity to serve our community by fostering leadership that lights a path for a new way forward under the stewardship of the leaders of tomorrow. Leadership is an act of exercise in listening, learning, and acting with courage in the face of significant challenges. We live in a time where confirmation bias is rampant and collaborative leadership is based in critical thinking, too often absent and even discouraged. MGAL seeks to steward future leaders who are willing to engage even when those conversations are difficult, especially when they are difficult. In the words of MGAL Advisory Body Member Yesseni Jacobo, "This school is a love letter to the Petaluma and Sonoma County communities. We love this community and we believe that together we can support inclusive and constructive leadership for our future." When I was a teacher, I kept this advice in mind always. We have to prepare our children for jobs, problems, and puzzles that do not yet even exist. Critical thinking and leadership.
Thank you, Ashley.
Okay.
Do you want me to read? I know the first meeting, you read the first 10. I can read the other ones?
Or I can read any. It's okay. Unless anyone is inspired to. Okay. My name is Collette Winkelman, a resident and business owner in Sonoma County, as well as the supporter of the Magnolia Global Academy and their efforts to offer a diverse and challenging high school academic program that focuses on higher learning for continued education as well as the development of leaders. Please vote to authorize Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders as a dependent charter school in the Petaluma City School District. The MGAL will add to the academic culture of Petaluma and creating more diverse learning opportunities, as well as based on its structure and objects, will lead to encouraged graduates that will take leadership in the community and involvement of the city and county. Thank you for reading this message. I'm grateful for all of your hard work during this time. Okay, Rodney. My name is Rodney Harris, and I am on the MGAL Advisory Body. Please vote to authorize Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders as a dependent charter school in the Petaluma City Schools District. I want this school in Petaluma because there is a need and our young people deserve the opportunities MGAL can provide. Please vote to authorize MGAL and work with the MGAL team to bring this school to our community. My name is Julie Lanard, and I have two children, one that attends Credo High School and one that attends PAX. Please vote to authorize Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders as a dependent charter school in the Petaluma City Schools District. I want this school in Petaluma because we need more choices than a one-size-fits-all public high schools in Petaluma. One that focuses on building leaders and allows each individual to be their authentic self in a supportive environment. It would be ideal to have a smaller school for those that appreciate the smaller size and focused approach. The project-based curriculum and core values are attractive, and I would like my youngest daughter to be part of an environment like that. We have found that Credo has offered an individual approach to each student, and our 10th grader is flourishing in the small, unique environment. She has also had the opportunity to play sports, which has increased her confidence and has kept her active. Right now, we are considering Credo High School for our younger daughter. If the other Petaluma High School opportunities are not available, please vote to authorize MGAL and work with the MGAL team to bring this school to our community. Okay. Hello, my name is Tanya Bruno. I have lived in Sonoma County for 21 years. I have twin daughters currently in 6th grade. Please vote to authorize Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders as a dependent charter school in the Petaluma City Schools District. I live in Santa Rosa, and my twin daughters currently attend school in Healdsburg. Their school ends in 8th grade. I want MGAL in our community because I would like to have the unique opportunity for my daughters to attend MGAL for high school. Their current middle school is an innovative, project-based school with small class sizes where children are known. Our children have thrived in this environment, and we hope to give them a similar opportunity for high school. Please vote to authorize MGAL. We are willing to make the drive to Petaluma for MGAL and are willing to move our girls into the Petaluma City School to support the school. Thank you for reading this message. I'm so grateful for all the work you do in our community. Okay, Michelle Hart Tinsley. My name is Michelle Hart Tinsley, and I have two children who attend Quana Elementary School and Mixed Greens. I am unable to attend the meeting on 15th and would like this read aloud as public comment. I support Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders and want to see this school built in our community because it's important to have schools that start off with the intentions of being all-inclusive and anti-racist. I urge you to work with the MGAL team and vote to authorize MGAL. I want MGAL in our community because my children are black. I have heard plenty of stories of racism, especially in the Petaluma School District. Families deserve to have an alternative to help those kids feel safe and supported to foster a better learning environment. As we think about middle and high school options for our children, we would strongly like to consider MGAL as an option. MGAL would be a huge asset to our community. Thank you for reading this message. I am grateful for all the work you do in our community. Okay. My name is Larissa Lasca Rublich. I have two children who attend McKinley Elementary School. I am unable to attend the meeting on the 15th and would like this read aloud as public comment. I support Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders and want to see this school built in our community because our community would benefit from a school that is focused on gender equity and anti-racism. I want my children to have this curriculum so that these ideas are reinforced and reflected in their school community and not just at home. Additionally, I believe in the product-based learning model and global citizenship. I love McKinley and my children are thriving there. However, the accelerated model at PAX may not be a good fit for one of my children, and we need other high-quality, small, middle schools to support children who may not be best served in an accelerated environment or one of the larger middle school programs. I urge you to work with the MGAL team and vote to authorize MGAL. As we think about middle and high school options for our children, we would strongly like to consider MGAL as an option. MGAL will be a huge asset to our community. Thank you for reading this message. I am so grateful for all the work you do in our community. Okay. My name is Cara Vera Peff, and I have two children. I have children who attend the Orchard View Charter School. I am unable to attend the meeting on 15th and would like this read aloud as public comment. I support Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders and want to see this school built in our community because our community is diverse and dedicated to providing the education necessary for our next global leaders. We need schools that go beyond inclusion, teaching anti-racism, critical history, curricula, and strategies to help not only fight but reverse climate change. I urge you to work with the MGAL team and vote to authorize MGAL. I want MGAL in our community. Our kids need a school where they can belong and learn the skills to lead us into a rapidly evolving future. As we think about middle and high school options for our children, we would strongly like to consider MGAL as an option. MGAL will be a huge asset to our community. Thank you for reading this message. I am so grateful for all the work we do in our community. My name is Megan Eisen. I have two children who attend school in Sonoma County. I am unable to attend the meeting on the 15th and would like this read aloud as public comment. I support Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders and want to see this school built in our community because there is not a public school whose principal values and pedagogy support an inclusive learning environment grounded in racial and gender justice where all students can thrive. Neurodivergent, gender diverse, and non-white kids need a school where they can be treated like whole human beings and don't have to explain how to make a classroom more inclusive to their teachers. I urge you to work with the MGAL team. I urge you to work with the MGAU team and to vote to authorize MGAU. I want MGAU in our community because it's time to embrace that change is needed in our public K-12 schools to divest from the white supremacy that's so embedded in the curriculum and policies that people believe it's biased to point that out. Innovative schools that teach our children to be critical thinkers is the best way to prepare our kids to build a sustainable future for everyone. As we think about middle and high school options for our children, we would strongly like to consider MGAU as an option. MGAU can set the standard for what culturally responsive public education looks like and become a model for other schools throughout our county and state. My name is Dave Endurus. I have two children who attend schools in Sonoma County. I am unable to attend the meeting on the 15th and would like this read aloud as public comment. I support Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders and want to see the school built in our community because I want a public school that supports anti-racist pedagogy, gender justice, and our neurodivergent kids. I urge you to work with the MGAU team and to vote to authorize MGAU. Our community needs an innovative school like MGAU, which will help teach our children to build a sustainable future and a more just world. As we think about middle and high school options for our children, we would strongly like to consider MGAU as an option. MGAU will be a school where parents can be confident that the staff is working to make the classroom a safe, welcoming, and inclusive space where students feel a sense of belonging and can see themselves reflected in the curriculum and staff. Thank you for reading this message. Okay. Last one, Dan Noble. I write this email in support of the Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders. As a parent of a student in Petaluma City Schools and as a principal in Old Adobe Union School District, I am always seeking ways to improve the ways we provide meaningful learning opportunities to our students. MGAU's mission has the potential to offer an experience that can offer a safe, inclusive, and innovative learning environment that can engage and inspire students in our community. We as educators continuously seek ways to shift the institutional structures in order to best serve our students and provide a school like MGAU in Petaluma, providing a school like MGAU in Petaluma would do justice. Thank you for considering their charter proposal and for all you do for the students in our community. Thank you, Ashley.
Great. So it seems a bit disjointed. At this point, we close the public hearing, and then we move, we've got, we'll get to the action items towards the end of the short agenda at 7.2.
And with that, we are going to close the public hearing on MGAU. All right. Next up, adoption and approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. Comments from the public on non-agendized items. So if anyone in person or on Zoom has a comment about something not on the agenda, you know, maybe let's actually take a break right now? Do you need a break?
No, no, no. I was just looking at water.
Oh.
I forgot mine.
Okay. Let's take, okay.
Aw.
Okay. All right. Never mind, on the break. We will open the chat, and if anyone in person wants to comment about something that's not on the agenda. Nothing? Okay. We're going to close the chat, move on. Comments from the public on action items. All right. Do we have anyone in the chat? No? All right. Let's close it. All right. Moving on, action items. Item 7.1.1, Resolution 2122-09. Tony, do you want to walk us through this one?
So every year, we go through the sufficiency of instructional materials, and this resolution just confirms that we have sufficiency of materials and our students have all the materials they need for instruction in regards to this item.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last part.
Sorry. So basically, this resolution just states that we are in compliance with the instructional materials, and we are, and all our students have the instructional materials for this year.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Tony? No? All right. Can we get a motion for this?
I move to approve the resolution. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Resolution 2122-10. I assume this is the same but for secondary?
Yes, and this is for secondary.
Okay. All right. Questions?
I move to approve this resolution.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item 7.2.1, MGAU Charter Petition. Do you have any questions or comments before we vote?
Sure. We'll do the discussion with the comments first.
You want the comments first?
Or the votes first? Oh, sorry. I think we discussed, and then we, all right, okay.
Yeah. Sure. Can I start?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I want to thank the petitioners for bringing this to us, and I want to thank all the committee members who are showing their support for it, as well as those who are not, and just showing-
Is he in my phone?
I think it is. Is it? Okay. As well as those who spoke out against it. I mean, I'm just grateful for this discussion and people's engagement in this thing. You know, I've spent the last several weeks, you know, not only reading the actual proposal, which I encourage everyone to do, even though it's quite long, and I've spent this time reading every email that I received and listening to the public hearings on this. And I've been keeping, you know, very diligent notes and kind of coding all the responses that I've gotten. And the things that I pick up from that are some key ideas that I think are really resonant with not only the community but what the board has been talking about for quite a while, and then some question marks as well. There was one comment in particular that really struck me that I read on email, and Ashley read it also tonight. The commenter said that, I think it was Yenzi, the commenter was saying that Yenzi described this petition as a love letter for Petaluma. And that resonated with me because that's what I, that was the closest to what I felt I was reading when I read the petition. It wasn't, it wasn't as, didn't stand as strong as a proposal for the construction of a school. It stood stronger as an expression of values that you want to see reflected in a school. And a lot of those values are, you know, I can't argue with, and they're very strong. But it was on the details of, you know, how this would be implemented. There's so many questions about free lunch, free transportation, free international travel, all these things that aren't free, they have to be funded somehow, that, you know, raise concerns with me. But that said, when I look at this expressions of support, there, I see clusters of what is being supported, and this is independent of what the proposal is. But what I hear, the one that was expressed most consistently and most frequently was a school focused on equity and inclusivity. I think all of us, in fact, in our board goals and our district goals, that we want a district that is centered around equity and diversity, equity, inclusion. I can't say that I would support a school centered on it at the expense of the district. Our whole district has to be focused on diversity, equity, and inclusivity. So the petition resonates with me because we have that shared goal. I don't think I can support it being at a single school at the expense of the district. I think we want the whole district. And we are, I think we're doing things that are promoting DEI now. We've got a long ways to go, but I would really welcome your help in helping us think about how to get the district focused on DEI and not isolated into a school. But the other things that I read in the emails and what I've heard that are different than what we have right now that sound really positive to me are folks talking about a diverse option for high school and junior high here in Petaluma. The district has been talking about that for a while, and so that's something that I think is something to hold on to that we might be able to build together. Gianni, you said, you know, option two, you said, talked about a partnership. I'm going to come back to that in a minute, but I want to get through this list first. The second thing that was resonant was project-based learning, that I won't say it's unique in our schools, because we have schools that do that, but to create a school that's centered on that, I think that's a strong possibility. And then the last thing that I heard a lot was a small school setting. We do have small school settings with Valley Oaks and San Antonio, but this would be a different kind of small school setting that's focused on a specific, you know, curricular theme. And so those are the things, you know, the diverse option for Petaluma, small school setting, project-based learning, those are things that I can get my, I can get my support around if it can be done in a partnership. And that's where I want to close on, Gianni. Option two, you know, with, that you mentioned about partnering with the district, you know, in the sense that the commenter said this is a love letter to Petaluma, but what the proposal is more of a marriage, you know, it's not, it's not just an expression of, it's not just an expression of, you know, how great the world is and how great it is to be with you, but how is this going to work practically? And so, you know, I don't, if you're really, if you're really interested in partnering, I'm interested in partnering, and, but I, you know, but partnering doesn't mean one side dictating the conditions of a marriage. That, I don't think marriages work that way. You know, it is truly a co-production of an idea. And so that option sounds pretty, you know, promising, and especially if we can focus on those things that I just listed that you, you know, built, that you have shown us, you know, that there's community support around, diverse option, project-based learning, small school setting. So that, that's where, that's where I stand. I think there are some morsels here, more than morsels, there are some ideas here that I think could help the district head along the path that we were headed on anyway. And now the petitioners have, you know, generated a lot of support around these things.
Thank you. Sheldon? Do you, I'm speaking into a microphone.
So as usual, Sheldon, I think does a very good job at summarizing how a lot of us are feeling. I think this is one of the only times we'll let a man speak on our behalf. He wasn't, he wasn't trying to speak on our behalf by any means, but I think these four women support what Sheldon is saying. I also really like option two. I know a lot of you in the room and a lot of folks that have emailed, and I would have gone to this school, I would have loved this school, but like Jenny said, thinking about everybody else and who might, the unintended consequences and who might be left out and left behind. We've seen what charter schools, even with the best intentions, end up looking like in our community. A few years ago, when we were looking at Live Oak, it was 88% white. And so that's just something I'm really, really hesitant personally around. And so option two is my favorite of continuing to work together and trying to find the best, most sustainable path forward in a way that works for all of our schools and all of our students, because the biggest fear I've had this whole time is that the marginalized students at our comprehensive schools could just be further marginalized. For example, if all of the kids with woke parents go to the Awesome Charter School, what about the closeted queer kid whose parents are sure as heck not going to send them to MGAU? What about the parents who just, I mean, there are lots of different scenarios. And I think that the charter petition takes a great stab at addressing them, but I would be more comfortable voting yes if I, if I knew that the staff had the conviction that that was going to work really, really well. So it breaks my heart, but as it stands, I would have to vote to deny, but really want to be pushing for option two.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Thank you for coming, for commenting. It was definitely a lot of thought. Both of you have definitely expressed my feelings. I'm not going into the options that were given to us. That's not my place here. I really wanted to just kind of comment about, to thank the staff for the amount of time that they spent on this petition. When Magnolia Global Academy for Leaders submitted the petition to establish a dependent charter in Petaluma City Schools, it was August of this year, at a time when our schools were dealing with the myriad challenges of reopening and in-person instruction during a surge in the COVID-19 pandemic. And since then, keeping our schools open and safe for all of our students and staff. Given these burdens, I want to take this opportunity to sincerely thank all of our staff for the tremendous amount of time, effort, and seriousness with which you approached analyzing Magnolia's petition, especially during this difficult time. The staff report was thoughtful, thorough, and clear, and it addressed many of the serious concerns that I had with the petition since it was first submitted in August. It is then very disappointing that the Magnolia team has failed to address these significant legal and operational deficiencies in any substantive or meaningful way at either the public hearing or during our board meeting tonight. The public comment, your comments tonight, what Sheldon said about the bits and pieces are all really important. I think we all see that, and I think that we all want equity, inclusivity, and diversity in our schools throughout our district. So for these reasons, I'm voting to support the staff recommendation and deny the petition.
Ellen, do you have anything?
I have really nothing to add, actually. I don't want to take up a lot of time. I want to thank Sheldon and Caitlin and Maddie for their very, very thorough responses. I'm also troubled with the fact that there were some glaring issues in the petition that the petitioners knew about and did not correct. I love the idea of a magnet school or a small 7 through 12 high school, but I cannot vote for this one.
All right. Yeah, I mean, again, like Maddie, I want to thank all the staff for all the time that you took to- you took to review the petition. 500 pages was daunting, and we got through it. Thank you guys for all the work that you put into it over this past year. Like others have said, I was, like, the staff, the staff report did address a lot of issues with the petition. I was hoping to get some clarity or have some things resolved either tonight or in the response from the petitioners. There are things like the budget in terms of the staffing, the different costs, the wages, the benefits, attendance, facilities, the auditing process, also the impact to our current programs, facilities, people brought up, you know, and again, like also how it would impact the districts that we partner around us. Someone brought up LC Allen, that's a good example, as well as the educational program that was in the staff report, how Magnolia would support English language learners, CTE pathways, next-generation science standards, A through G requirements, elective offerings. Also, the issue of governance was brought up, employee qualifications for the school, health and safety as it relates to transportation issues, as well as speaker, I think it was Jenny, brought up admission preferences, and then as well as discipline. And none of those things were addressed in the petitioners' written response or tonight. And so I just think after, like, this process, as much as we would like to collaborate, I don't see how we can, because we still don't have any of those issues resolved. So, all right. Does anyone have any questions for anyone, for any staff? We've all kind of made statements, but any questions for anyone about any of those specifics? No? Okay. All right. So-
So I'll call the question, the proposal from MGAL. So this is an up or down vote for the proposal.
Yeah. We're voting on the petition.
Give me a second.
I'll second. Oh.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. All right. And with that, we are adjourned.